Okay, it is nine o'clock on Monday, October the eighth of twenty eighteen, and I called Park County Commissioners's Court to order. Today we have Mike Martin, who's out for medical surgery with a patient, so if you will please stand in my standing.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. We thank you for the rain. We are so grateful that you remind us that you are the giver of blessings of life. Father, as a citizen of this community, I'm grateful for those that serve us. I pray that today that you would give them wisdom and courage to do those things that must be done. Father, thank you for our nation. Thank you for the way that you have your hand of protection upon us. Thank you for blessing us richly. Mostly, we thank you for Jesus, and it's in his name we pray.
United States of America, and considerate government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our right to Texas is like, our right to regions to be Texas, one state under God, one humanity, indivisible.
First thing on the agenda is the emergency management, it's from the September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, the District Court meeting, and the September twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, Special Court Committee meeting. Three, four, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, right begins. Two is vouchers. Consider and act upon approval of the payment of vouchers. Process by the county office of office from September nineteenth, twenty eighteen through October thirty, twenty eighteen. Check numbers, one eight two four zero nine through one eight two six nine one, NY with France version one, year sixty, one one four one, and then a couple of additional ones. And add a big head of France, or a grand total of one million one hundred eighty-seven thousand and seventy-six dollars and ninety-four cents.
I approve the vouchers as filed by county directors, and now total by county for one million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Second, for discussion, I have a couple of questions, Judge, if I may. Got one on here, page five of twenty-eight. Check number one eight two four eight four, the amount of seven thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars towards the bottom. AV Corp installed two-way audio communication at the detention center. Is this new or a replacement?
It's new to help with the, I guess what the judge, the judge wanted to do the rank, the rankings where they're doing the individual rankings. So, to do that, we had to buy a room up and then have one inmate come out. It's a privacy issue, plus they're asking questions of the inmates, you know, from deep rent. We had a meeting with the district judges and JP's everything. So, best way to get this one.
Okay, alright. What grant does that mean? SCAP. SCAP. Okay, alright. Check number seven of, sorry, page seven of twenty-eight. Check number one eight two five oh four, towards the bottom. Construction sixteen hundred, new concrete install.
That was the east side of the district. I'm even counting more doubts here.
Okay. Okay.
I have a couple of concerns, and of course, one is one I've expressed the last couple of meetings, and I still don't think it's appropriate to pay the break-up to the D.C. Second thing I would just bring to everybody's attention, because I don't know if this is just me, is this whatever or not, but in our last meeting, we paid the city the seventy-five thousand for FY eighteen. And this year, and in this month, we're paying them again, seventy-five thousand for FY nineteen. My concern is that money just sits in the city's accounts, working for them, rather than sitting in our account, like you did last year, and it brings interest and working for the county. Since that money's not being utilized, I don't know why we have to send it off on the first month of our year.
That is the way it's written into the contract. Part of the reason I didn't do that with the FY eighteen is I don't get a quarterly report of the contract states, so I don't want to get with the contract that's I'm paying.
Carrie, you said you're not getting the quarterly reports. Okay. Great. We do have one more question, Judge, if I may. Page fourteen of twenty-eight, line item one E two five six eight, Holmes, Murphy and Associates, consulting fee.
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
Not sure whether that is four.
Four, sure.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion, second, all favoritism. Number three, insurance reports, recognized insurance fund report, Kay, there's nothing as usual. Okay. And then on number four, workers' compensation insurance. I'm just kind of like, Kay, address this issue.
Yes, the agenda item that you see listed on today's agenda is misstated, and that's my error. I immediately sent an old agenda item through instead of the updated one. The agenda item under item A should be considered an act upon recommendation to move the workers' compensation contract to D East Texas Self-Insurance Fund for the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the period of November first, twenty eighteen through October thirty-first, twenty nineteen, this being included to the D. Preparing Group LLC as the county's revenue paid separately back then. So, there was just a difference in the actual recommendation, the recommendation from Steve Wapin, he is here to discuss this item, that the recommendation is to move from D. Davis Political Subdivision to D. East Texas for the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, and maybe it's my mistake, I apologize.
I'm certainly moving.
Four ninety-nine, even.
Did you say D. East?
D. East Texas, yes. Self-insurance fund. And now let's.
Kay, is it okay if we do this without the correct wording?
Yeah, the item is, it's enough notice.
Okay.
For the couple.
Okay.
So, mine is.
Okay. And now let's see.
These are the, we mean.
Yes, yeah, that's all about it. Steve.
This is the end of a three-year rate guarantee that we had with Texas Political Subdivisions. We've, we've sent the submission to thirteen different companies. We got quotes from four companies, including D. East Texas, our renewal company, Texas Political Subdivisions, Texas Association of Counties, and Texas Mutual. The renewal with Texas Political Subdivisions is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand seventy-eight. The, they would not offer a guarantee again, they would just give a one-year guarantee. D. East Texas Self-Insurance Fund gave us an option to either go for a three or a five-year guarantee. I would recommend we extend that to five years. We can get out of it, we have to give them six-month notice at any time that we want to get out of it. I currently have, I currently have Interloper College, a pretty independent school district, and South Plains College with D. East Texas, and they've been very, very good. So, we have been averaging the last five years about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in claims, our worst year of being over three hundred thousand. We've had two bad years and three good years in the last five years. So, the potential of having a bad, bad workers' comp year and having this rate guarantee, I think it could save the county some.
And that rate guarantee is valid for five years, if we need to.
That's right. That's right. We would have to choose to extend it, and they're offering a three or five years. Texas Association of Counties bit two twenty-seven, eight seventy. Texas Mutual was two oh four, nine ninety-six. So, D. East Texas was the least expensive, and they offered the guarantee.
I move that we approve the workers' compensation proposal from D. D. East Texas for one hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the five-year guarantee.
Second, this is a question, can you dig this deal up?
You know, the negative I see is not with D. East Texas, it's with all self-insurements pools, which in fact is a self-insurance pool, TPS is a self-insurance pool, you know, they're all, they're all pools, they're not insurance companies, and they have reinsurance over the top, but we did have Texas Association of Public Schools when they brought in two thousand seventeen, so it can't happen, and we're watching that very closely. So, the negative would be just the financial stability, that we, you know, and D. East Texas is financially stable, but it's excluded from the subdivisions in the past two years. So, we continue to watch and make sure that they're not, and they provide their financials.
You do that, you want?
Yes.
So, if we need to get out of it, six months.
They have a motion, second on the petition.
I move we authorize Judge Taylor to sign the order on the service agreement, D. East Texas.
Motion, second on that. Favoritism. So, we said, okay, we'll get that, everything fixed, we'll get that. Okay, number five, elections. The board in on here was, was also going to consider an act upon the student seat inherent within the stars in the multi-language translator to accommodate American Sign Language, and open to hundred other language groups and language services. San Fay Building, Second Baptist Church.
Yes, we have a mutual to use, and I'm particularly excited about the American Sign Language on this, but this is Language Line, and there are approximately thirty-eight languages on here where we get a video person for a voter to converse with, or just like a translator between them. And then there's another two hundred languages where it's audio. And this has been approved by the Texas Secretary of State, we just will square in the translator whenever we use this, we're only going to put it in two places, we're putting it at San Fay Building, or putting it at Second Baptist Church, because those are the, well, they're central to product. And so, I'm very excited about this, and you know, it kind of came up. We do have people who go, as soon as they become a U.S. citizen, they're given a voter registration card, then they come in to vote, and we cannot accommodate it. East Ridge School has over sixty different languages they're spoken in, in schools. So, what I wanted to do today is to do a little demonstration for you guys, okay? So, and these are all the different, like, well, these are just some of the languages that you can see, that, it scrolls down, those are just some of the topics, I don't even know what's in these countries. But, anyway, what would you like?
I'm not Semalia.
For five hundred. Okay. So. My internet connection is not working.
Brian. I'm just saying.
I have a hard job.
Well, you know what, we recorded a video just in case something went wrong, so we're okay with that. And we did a test, okay?
All the way, what is the requirement for citizenship in the English language? Is there ever?
I do not know.
I thought they even had to speak English.
I know they have to do a test, but most Americans can pass, but other than that, I don't.
Well, that speaks, that's okay.
That's, yes. So, that's you, that's me, that's you. And so, when this person comes on, they're going to introduce themselves.
It'll be a live person?
It's a live person. And they're going to ask what you need, and we're trying to get, try to get a seat.
How long does it take to hear that?
Varies, you may start to connect.
Yes.
Some connections are really fast, some of them are hard. There's multiple people with each language, so it's just going to have fun, then.
What else does that, like, there? It's heavily used for?
It is used to find out if someone's registered to vote, or they can't manage to vote, or whether they're registered or not, how many of them are.
Does this make it more like the act?
It's not used for anything that has any data on it. The only thing that it's saying is it's going to Vote Texas, so we can just look up somebody's voter registration, as you can do on the phone. But it doesn't connect, it doesn't connect to anything that connects to a vote, so.
Plus, you change your registration.
You change your registration. Okay, I'm not faulting.
Well, somebody hacked in and put a different name in.
Well, they'd be, they would have to honestly hack into the state of Texas. So.
You're just displaying the data on that.
Right, that's right. I'm saying this, and it should be doing.
What was your argument?
It is. But if all those, what was changed, like, I was a guy, I was, I did check with them this morning, and they were there.
You're not here.
It could be.
It's taken a while to connect.
It's been a while, it's been a little bit.
Okay.
You want to.
Well, there's something, hang on. There you go. One more.
For calling the language translation, this is Martha, ID number two-two-six-zero-two-three. I'll be your Semalian interpreter today. This call may be monitored for training and quality assurance purposes.
Okay. How, what's your name is? Is that correct?
Yes.
How are you?
Good.
And where are you right now? Where are you located?
I am located in Minnesota.
In Minnesota.
Okay.
I am the county judge here in Potter County in Texas, and we are giving a demonstration today of the language barriers, some of the big barriers that we have to people come to vote. So, I picked Semalia as the language to hear the translation. Okay, so, I don't know what you want me to ask.
Well, ask, ask her to go ahead and go through what she would with a voter, because first thing she's going to do, she's going to explain what she means, and she'll do that in Semalian, and then ask her to, ask the voter to present a photo ID.
Okay, okay. So, are we putting the non-voter?
You're putting your election voter.
Oh, and worker, she's the voter.
Yes.
You're Semalian.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
You're the source.
Okay.
You want to be the voter?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so.
I don't have a script.
I'm an election voter, this lady came in to vote, and she doesn't speak English, she wants to vote for the county judge. So, I need you to tell her to vote.
I know.
So, she's going to ask you to translate.
I guess you're going to ask her, you need to see, you need to see this voter's photo ID.
Okay, tell her I need to see her voter's ID.
Okay, well, we're doing that kind of a point to get an understanding.
I was going to say the very same thing. Okay, that's good, that's awesome. That's awesome. So, now she, now she shows it to me, I ask her what, do I ask her what party?
Well, that in this case, she would, she would say, if she could read English, well, I'd have to go and vote on the machine, she would go and vote on her own.
Okay.
If not, then this lady would go with her, and she would be working through it while she's voting. Okay?
So, would she have the actual ballot, or she, or I'm the voter that doesn't have the language, and so I'm having to?
You're looking at the machine, and so, as I explain, you're going to push this button, and she'll say, you push that button that she's pointing to.
Okay.
Okay?
Interesting.
Okay.
And so, we're the, this is the first county in Texas to adopt this, right?
Yes, but we're the first in Texas to adopt this. And I'm particularly excited about the American Sign Language.
Right, but I think always the conversation in Amarillo and in Potter specifically is the multiple languages and dialects within that.
Yes.
So, I think that's, that's interesting, right, that we have something like this to offset a voter's interference.
Yes, take away, Steve.
Very good.
Alright, alright, that's all we need for this one.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Bye.
So, cool, so there's coming in to tell you what language I need, and you?
And if we can't understand, they can look at, because what you saw.
Yeah, they can pick the language.
Because they don't all use the same alphabet we use, and so, they can scroll down and find their own language. Okay?
It's five dollars a minute.
It is five dollars a minute. I don't think we'll be using it terribly often, but I think when we do use it, it's a great value to the person that we're using for, or the group. In the case of the presidential, we had a group of Semilians, so we could have done it all together for the most part, had, had we had this.
Why doesn't start, it's a connection.
Why does not start to work here? And then it's, it's, bye.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Alright, number six, disposition of capital credit funds, you consider an act upon the disposition of capital credit funds received for the amount of four thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars in terms of, since the matter authorized by section eighty-eight-one-one four, the Texas Department. Last year, we went with the bridge in Casa. Now, remember I said, that's supposed to say, that's supposed to be here, and listen, to see. There's another concern. So, capital credits, the bridge and Casa, is that appropriate for y'all, if you had had it, or is there something?
Well, the only thing, I, every, since this is, I say fairly new now, it's kind of going on here for, but one thing that caught my attention, Judge, is item seven, encouragement, promotion, improvement, application of the arts, especially because this definitely does have a minority tone to it, and how the dollars can be used, right, to, there's some examples in here of contracts with the county for minority-owned businesses, like, you can use this for a lot of things, but it made me think of the project that Melinda is working on in the North Heights area, she may have already left the room, but it made me think about the art, I don't know if it's for money, but since it does allow for application of the arts, I thought that was kind of a different way to use some of the dollars.
Especially, yeah, specifically, more specifics on it?
We, yeah, we could certainly, if you might, we could pin a small dollar amount for it, and then come back to specifics. I did not run that by her, but I know that it's a good, good way, the first one is in North Heights, yeah, it's a good undertone, it's something exciting, and an application of the art, so I thought that was a different way, I think, what gives us flexibility around how to use this every year, something quite different.
I think there's another one, too. This year especially, we could consider, and it's number four, in that we're hosting the West Texas Judges and Commissioners Association here in April, and there are other counties that are fanatical, that, but you didn't want to give to us for that, and we, as the county, have done nothing, except what I've helped, asking vendors to help support, so I think if that would, that would fit as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good one as well.
But I don't think we ought to give the four thousand, I think we ought to continue to give to Casa and the bridge.
Yeah, that's fine. You're up to start. What if we just did, we just split four ways, right? And we just split four ways? So, it could be the Casa, Bridge, what would you call, is just the Texas Association of Counties Conference, annual conference, what would you call that commission?
West Texas County Judges' Commission.
Conference. Okay, just, I'm making sure that we're highlighting the conference and not just the interview. And then the, I know it's the Arts Program, but I don't have the exact name.
What do you get there?
Yeah.
So, what would be, so that be?
So, I think the forty-seven, forty-six is the number, I wrote down four thousand seven hundred and forty-six and thirty-five cents.
She's got, you had the, oh, you don't. I thought you were buying it off.
No.
So, right now, we're, 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 we're in Casas, right, and?
Casa, Bridge, and Casa, and the dollars.
I mean, prior to.
Yes. Casa, Bridge.
So, be eleven hundred and eighty-six dollars fifty-nine cents each. Okay, and we'll find out what the, what the organization is in the long run, okay?
And I think it's not, it's just the Arts Pro, they vote.
Okay.
Never mind that, I'm just, okay, so I have a motion.
I have a motion that we approve capital credits for twenty eighteen, the amount of four thousand, four hun, four thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents funds to be equally distributed to Casa Bridge Arts Program and the West Texas County Judges and Commissioners Conference.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. On favor, two. Thank you. Number seven, GPS monitoring, I consider an act upon a contract with recovery, health care corporation for GPS monitoring services and drug testing services for use with the court supervisor. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. There's some literature, might not reading.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir.
I wish it was.
Okay.
You got your question. Hi, everybody, my name's Larry Vanderwood, and I'm CEO of Recovery Company in Dallas. Little bit, little bit about who we are. We operate four states, Texas, Oklahoma, Iowa, Minnesota. We have thirty offices in those four states. We offer electronic monitoring, GPS, transg径, which is not called, brain testing, drug testing, outpatient treatment, and private probation. We have twenty-four state monitoring center in Dallas that communicates with our client, staff, and law enforcement. We serve one hundred and thirty-six counties in Texas, the GPS, and more without all monitoring. As of October first, we monitor tests over eight thousand people a day. We have pre-trial and general protection programs in Tarrant, Bear, Moles, Brazos, McLennan, Oasis, Parker, and Hidalgo. One of our champion counties is McTunne County, Wakeup. We saved them over five million dollars over the last four years in material costs. We've got twenty-one hundred clients that have gone through this particular program. Currently, we've got one staff member located at the probation department here, full-time staff, and another good thing about us is, if you have a client that, let's say, got arrested here and lives somewhere else, we can service them in any other county in Texas. We have every city, but up twenty-five thousand folks. The monitoring that we're talking about is an angle bracelet. Most of you will probably see one or heard of it on the news. There's two types of GPS monitoring. There's active and passive. Active is, we're watching this particular person twenty-four seven, every minute, we know exactly where they're going. Then there's passive. Passive is, I always like to use this scenario, I have a twin brother when I was growing up. At the end of the day, if we were out playing all day long, guess what happened at five o'clock when I got home? What did he tell my mother? Everything that I did. So, that's kind of what passive does. What it does is, it downloads all the information, and then gives it to us at the end of the day or the next day, which basically is a lesser cost. The question is, always on an active client, if we have a high-risk person, something happens, he does something that the court did not want them to do, who do we call? Who do we call at two o'clock in the morning? Mr. Easterling or the ju- or the judge? And, uh, so that's the question, who do we call? And I know Mr. Easterling's not going to have it with me right now, but, uh, we can call the sheriff department, they can send someone out to check it out. So that's the advantage of the twenty-four seven monitoring system in Texas. That's basically who we are, what we propose, all this is less than seven dollars a day. Uh, if you do alcohol monitoring, it runs a little bit more, it's ten dollars a day, and drug testing is eleven dollars. We're proposing two types of pay. One is accounting pay and offender pay. If the offender can pay for it, we call, y'all qualify, he can pay for it, let him pay for it. If he's indigent, then you go, uh, you guys can pay for it, and less or less. So, uh, that's what we're proposing. Uh, there's a lot of different variables, uh, in this that have to get kind of worked out procedurally. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Let me tell them about the, exactly how that, uh, works on the alcohol, what it does there.
The alcohol monitor, the scrambler, is an ankle-worn, uh, bracelet. And it takes a test, takes a sample of the person's sweat. And I know that most folk, folks, been around someone that'd been out drinking heavily the night before, and he walks in the room and what did you smell? Just found the hell out. That's the sensible perspiration that we capture. We take it in, it's transmitted into, into the bracelet, and then once a day, it uploads to our, uh, website. We analyze if we can tell that person had consumed alcohol the night before. At that point, we can also lock them down if they need to be on house arrest. So that's the alcohol.
So, uh, tell me about the passive and the active, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So what's the, uh, I guess the key differentiation in, in the active over the passive? I think we'll set up, anybody?
We have it on A C P, twenty-five cents a day.
It will save us that time.
And I'm sure the, the serious department, uh, appreciate that for that.
Well, uh, in theory, what happens is we will manage the alerts for you. In other words, something happens, we will chase the particular person, we will contact them. We will find out if it's something that we can manage, if it's something serious enough, then we'll, then we'll notify law enforcement. So we will manage those particular alerts first before we have to do something.
So who would be the, uh, person that we call at the?
Sheriff's Office. They call the sheriff's office, yeah.
What's a specific, uh, code calls?
You can even, Carrie and I have made these lately in the interior, and, and I was impressed with number one, because it's going to save us some money. We got spindled a little bit, but we're going to save one when we spend. And number two, uh, if a person gets out of jail and the work police type deal, and they're supposed to go from their home to work and back, it can even tell if they stop it to the total. Or anything to tell all.
Right. We had an officer in Houston, uh, that kills folks, and he was a police officer. So the judge made him on GPS, and he made a report to court every week. So she watched him every day, going to court, and he stopped at gas, and that was a no. And we watched him pull into the gas station, was there for ten minutes, and then go home, and she pulled him in the next day and arrested him. So it's that good. We can tell you where they are, uh, anytime during the day. And we have, uh, law enforcement needs to find them, they have a pursuit mode. They can call us up, say where is Joe Low, we can follow him.
So I have two questions. Um, currently, probation uses a type of service like this, are you the same vendor that's currently used? Okay, all right. And then the second, Carrie, I don't remember specifically talking about GPS during budget, what line item does this fit into?
We actually have two different line items in our specialty courts. We have thirteen thousand five hundred, and then in our court supervised release program, we have another eight thousand. A lot of huge budgets to start with, and it's not the least.
You're storing, okay. And then do we have any type of projections, um, as you're starting to look at how to utilize it? I'm looking for a, a sampling. Like you said, there's probably protocols, and there's requirements that I know, Carrie, you and your group are still working on with the program. Is this going to help offset twenty-five inmates, fifty, a hundred? Like what, what type of number can we anticipate as these first ones start coming out?
That would be up to law enforcement and the department, how many folks in all that, and how many of they qualify?
Right, and more than qualify, I think is the question. And I don't know, Sheriff, do you have any perspective on that?
Maybe more, more, uh, on the judges, like.
The district judges?
Who's going to qualify from the program.
Right, and so, um, I'm assuming you've still been meeting with them, and the district judges are aligned with this? Thank you for coming.
Oh, sure.
Sorry to hear about it.
Yeah, uh, happy. No, we've, uh, already started the bond pro- uh, program. We've written four bonds already, I believe we got nine more in the pipeline that we're currently, uh, in the review process on. Uh, the judges seem to be on board. I've not had any negative feedback, had some questions understandably, that, uh, we've been able to address. And we, uh, we were kind of hoping to roll this out a little slower, but because of needs of the sheriff's department, you know, we, we kind of went out there a little quicker than, uh, than we would have normally. So there wasn't a lot of time for education amongst the, uh, judges' staff. But, uh, yeah, I really want to thank Sheriff Thomas and, uh, Chief Johnson and Captain Dawson. Uh, their people have been great for us to work with and very helpful. So I, you know, I think this has a lot of potential. I know, uh, some of, uh, my colleagues in other jurisdictions where Larry's at, they, uh, they use, uh, GPS as a home of, type of, uh, con- home, home confinement for people that are sentenced on weekends, sentences and things, you know? So, you know, there are other aspects that the county could, could look at this, uh, and, and save some money as well, so.
Thank you.
I think they've, they've sent them like thirty candidates.
Yeah.
This is the pre-trial services thing that we just started.
Correct, yes.
What's its official name, Tim?
Uh, CSRP, Court Supervised Release Program. Is that a test?
I love. No, I just, I, um, I, in case you reference the acronym and I didn't know it, so.
Yeah, that's what.
Carrie, is there anything else fiscally that we need to be thinking about? I mean, kind of what I heard with these dollar amounts, and I, I don't anticipate twenty-one thousand, some change there to be enough to get us through the fiscal year. Maybe that's just something to think about once you exceed these, these rates, because it's six seventy-five a day with its active monitoring, which is what I've heard is kind of alluding to is active monitoring. Definitely cheaper than sitting in our jail, so I see that offset. I just don't know, Sheriff, if you've thought of any line items in your budget, if this goes over the twenty thousand, which I expect it to, um, maybe that's something we can just think about. We don't have to decide that today, but. Yeah, I mean, I think the, the goal is right, is that they're saving money in the jail, so the, the overall operations, not a, not a significant, I don't expect us to come in and say fifty percent, we're down on operation costs, but you know, ten, five, something.
I think bills and medical, I think we all face the crisis of savings initially.
Bills and medical, okay.
Maybe.
Okay, that's fair, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, still follow over.
There are a few counties that use it from the other side of the, of the GPS instead. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. I make a motion that we improve the contract with Recovery Healthcare Corporation for GPS monitoring services and drug testing services for use with the court supervised release program. Funds to come from, Carrie, you should tell me those line items again.
It's like, I want to bring service into it with specialty courts and the court supervised program budgets.
So the specialty courts and the court supervised release program budgets. I got it, yeah, okay.
Sure.
My motion is second, favor is two. Four zero.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, Park County Memorial Stadium. Mike, come on up for a second. I, I got an, uh, email the other day from him about the concert they had with, uh, Big Daddy, Big Daddy Wee, is that his name? And he's pushing, and he said, I quote, "The old gal came alive again." And he wasn't talking about me. He was talking about stadium, and it looked so awesome.
Stadium came alive again.
It looked so good, and so I went out to visit with him, and he got some pictures, I want y'all to see, um, of the outside of him, and the outside of him. And Mike, thank you so much for these, uh, just, uh, back in the, so, thank you. So how many people were there, about fifteen hundred, sir?
Fifteen hundred.
And the stage was?
Said at home plate.
Home plate facing the audience, and it was really big, wasn't it? Yeah. Let's see the back, see this, this, their logo, and they had their two ball caps there, and on either side of it, that used to be that ugly brown stuff?
On the right, the hat and the logo, we did that last year on the right, and left of those, we repainted those about two weeks ago, along with some repainting on the inside, going down that breezeway. And then repainting as you walk up into the breezeway, the steps going up, we repainted those.
That's beautiful, I would pray. So well, the water well has done that field well.
You have, uh, the entire infield's been rebuilt, raised up, that's new sod on the infield, you can't, uh, the end area, the ground area, and that's all new material that was imported. Back behind, uh, the, that area is new sod also. You'd have a new well, you have a new roof on the, uh, the very old top fresh box from the nineteen fifties. Yeah, a new, a new roof on that, you're in, you cannot see it right here, you can kind of see just a picture, but you're fixing to have new layouts. Down back behind this little well, which we talked about a few months ago. Uh, the string, you can kind of see, the, uh, protective string, you can kind of see a little reaction that that will be replaced before the end of the year. Place hasn't looked like this in, uh, probably since the delves were here.
So Mike, you said a couple of comments when I was out taking the tour, and I said, don't forget to tell the commissioners everything that you were telling me when you, you were talking about. Um, if we get comments around, and that ball, that ball field really doesn't have much life in it.
I know that there's a, probably a faction that would like to see that tour now. Most people are uneducated, that's what's going on out there. This place has improved more than I can tell you, and has the cost of taxpayers' time. We would like it to be kind of a in-pen version two. Concert, trade fairs, health shows, uh, different things like that. I even talked to, uh, old guy at the school about, you could have one act play out there on the stage. It's just, you're just kind of limited by your imagination. Uh, we've had, the Texas Tech has asked us about the possibility of playing a game there. Coming up here, I don't know who they play, but playing a game, uh, the field's not quite ready for that yet. Probably needs another year or two for the grads to really, really get good for that level of baseball. It's, there's just a lot of things that can happen out there. And, and I guess it was a year ago this month that y'all granted us permission to release it. And the things that happened here, in my opinion, are remarkable, and two or three years down the road, I think we'll see more things like this as people become, uh, aware of the possibility of being able to use it. I mean, we're open to just about anybody using it, uh, for something like I mentioned. A, a trade day, you know, fair type of thing, whatever.
And the boots and badges out there.
Boots and badges had their game out there. I'll tell you this, because I'm real proud of it, the, uh, there was about twelve hundred people. There was some talk after the game about them moving to the ballpark downtown. I tried to discourage that, I said, you know, it's your game, you can take it wherever you want, but when you put twelve hundred people in this ballpark down here, you're going to lose the ambiance that you have right here. After the boots and badges game, uh, the families on both sides came on the field, they took pictures, they interacted with each other, I had to turn to sprinters wanting to get them out. Eleven o'clock at night, that's enough of a shift. Uh, anyway, a few days later, I received a report that the officers and firemen, they don't want to go up to the big place, they won't, they want to come back to our place next year because it's, you, you, it's just, it's just an experience, it really is. It's not impersonal, like, I, I think that one will be for a smaller group. Uh, I'm not, and I'm much of a favorite of ballpark downtown, but, uh, I think there's, I think there's a niche that we can fit into.
Brandon, go back two slides, and then there's the picture, right, there's, there's your dugout, Mike, aren't they? Right? There's dugout.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the, uh, the old dugouts, they were actually dangerous, but they were, they were like four and a half foot deep, you could come over and you could fall over in a hole.
We have filled that up, we're concrete in it, uh, it's like the drain, so that the drain water, we're in the process, we will put a new back on them, we torn the old back off, we put a new back on them, raise it up, and, and take it over the big shade for, uh, us or anybody else who uses the dugout. Those will be completed, well, they were supposed to start on those today, finish them today, and that's not true, they start on the day, and the rain stopped. But within a few days, those will be complete, and then before the end of the year, the event will be protecting them from the fans.
And then, um, Carrie, just a housekeeping thing, uh, I know around October of every year, sort of look for the line item of all the improvements, just for the records. Um, so I was excited to hear about sale, we've got all of that, let me get you to our, uh, business office, and so I'm expecting maybe at the core, next quarter, the one following, we'll recognize those actual improvements, just so we have them for the record.
I found that everything you, you have seen obviously costs money, money the same as setup does not have. I found it easy to solicit funds for this park. I don't even have to try all that hard, just mention it to someone, and I've been real fortunate, people have been very, very generous to us. And I think that emphasizes the point, they really don't want this going down, they just want someone to take care of it, and I think we can do that.
It sounds like you might be the perfect conduit.
I think so too. This, did you hear the scoreboard was, does it, by everyone, like, today?
The scoreboard was donated, the, the monies for all the things that I've mentioned have been donated. I can't, I don't, I personally don't have an accurate accounting, I take a check, and I take it to the, uh, letting managers, the books on it, and then I send her the bills, and she's wanting to give that to you in a, 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 an accurate amount. I tell you this, I still have money left, I know that much, and I'm going to spend it, I know that.
Mike, thank you.
Mike, thank you so much, thank you so much, appreciate that. Thanks, Brandon.
These two guys back here, Mr. White and Mr. Head, they've, they've been a little bit, but, uh...
They certainly have. All right, number nine, tax rule, to consider an active on the recovery of park and tax rule for twenty eighteen, the tax year. You want to just go over the tax? Grand totals, if, um, they have one and the other one? About the value totals for, okay.
Our assessed value is nine billion eight hundred forty-six million two hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred twenty-three. And our exemption is any amount of one billion two hundred nineteen million one hundred sixty thousand nine hundred fifty-two. Leading a taxable value of seven billion nine hundred twenty-seven thousand one hundred twenty-four seventy-one. And the total net tax deal was fifty-three million one hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-three cents.
Sherry, how is that going as far as trending, um, on our assessed value exemptions, like what, are you seeing any trends? You know, I'm always looking and thinking about both for the counties, one of the things I always think about, and I don't know if this is fair, but... One of the things I always think about, and I don't know if this is fair, but county, Potter County, I feel like continues to grow on the commercial side, where Randall may be growing on residential. That's my own outside perception of things, but I don't know if that's fair based on what you're seeing trending wise.
I think we're growing in both areas.
Okay.
Maybe residentially not as fast as Randall, but we're still growing in that way. Our net build compared to last year is about two point five three more. So.
Million?
More than last year.
And we're going to be less.
And we're running about nine percent on that election, so we're, we're doing very well.
Thank you, Sherry.
We improved the pocket and tax rule for the twenty eighteen tax year.
Second.
Motion to second on favor of the chairman. Number ten, we're going to pass that for next term. Number eleven, Potter County and PRPC to consider an act fund that interlocal government could be applied to professional services between Potter County and PRPC for the administration and quarterly review. We're retiring the foundation and putting in strategic plan. That's your question.
So I will invite up Dustin, who we all know well at this point. And just to give everybody a little bit of a, of a high level, we'll make a couple of edits on this contract. This is really a draft contract, so we can certainly do that. You'll see dates that we need to adjust on here. But the short version is, this is four thousand dollars in our budget that we are partnering with PRPC specifically for the strategic plan that many of us in this room were a part of. So the idea behind it at a high level is quarterly meetings at PRPC. They will host. They will help us go through the plan, help us dive into what we want to try to accomplish year one. And this is really an attempt that it is a neutral body, that being PRPC, to get us all around the table, look at that strategic plan and help us, you know, bring some life to it, that it doesn't become a plan that we just did and sits on the shelf. So Dustin, please feel free to add to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so going back to April twenty seventeen, obviously Potter County and this body, after I was in multiple programs with PRPC to draft that strategic plan. So over the course of the next year, we held six working group meetings and two strategic planning sessions, to draft your strategic plan, which was a body that ultimately approved of in May of twenty eighteen. So through that process, I think some of the big takeaways was the communication and bringing everybody around, around the table to discuss the different things that were going on within the county. Obviously, we tried to capture as much of that as we could in the strategic plan. You guys had a lot of good momentum coming out of that strategic plan on, on communication and on discussing things with one another and, and bringing all the department heads and the commissioners together to discuss those things and look at, you know, different issues that the county was facing. So this agenda item that you guys have before you is just kind of hopefully to capture some of that momentum that you guys had coming out of the strategic plan, to bring that body back together on a quarterly basis. Obviously, to, to look at, you know, the issues that you're facing. As we wrote in your strategic plan, that's meant to be a vibrant document, a living document, that you guys can use and evolve and, and as the situation changes, you know, that strategic plan changes as well. And so PRPC would serve a similar role that we did through the strategic planning process, really as a third-party facilitator. We can have you guys set the agenda items, you know, create agendas for those working sessions and then bring that group back together, really just keep, keep that momentum going with the old communication amongst the departments in the county.
You know, this is something we've talked, we talked about when we were going through the process. Of course, when I saw the agenda item, I, I start getting, thinking maybe too much. I don't know. And one, my thinking is, is who are we going to have implemented, really? It's going to be our departments. And meeting four times a year to whip them in line, is that what we're doing or are we? I guess that's my question now. What, what is the department? How are the departments going to feel? Like, we're pressuring them more to do something? I don't know if that's our, that's our job.
Yeah, I would, I would share at least the feedback when we concluded it, and you, many of you in the audience were there. The comment was, "This was such a refreshing process to hear what each other was thinking and really open collaboration that there's not a time throughout the year." The commissioner's court isn't that spot. So what I heard was, "This was a great, refreshing topic, an idea, and a plan." I, I would hope that someone's perception isn't that we're whipping them into shade, nor that we have that authority to do that. Many of the things identified in the plan are low cost and are really just us rallying together as a county to highlight one to two, three things we want to work on. I don't think the goal is to go into this, try to accomplish the entire plan. That is not feasible at any level. It's to keep the conversation going as years.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I, I mean, I'm saying, the process was fine and all that, but do we need to meet four times a year? And I'd like to hear from our departments who are going to be able to say that if that's too many times a year.
I think we should. Hopefully, we initiated this, we were engaging as a partnership, I wanted to respect it from the coaches and to try to step back and to actually hear what the departments were doing. It was a lot of exciting, engaging, anything that many of us didn't know across the hall. So this is an opportunity to, to sort of break into that invisible parrot and see exactly what was going on. And then see what their thoughts were as far as moving in the future. Strategic planning specifically is as exactly as it states, to see what we can sort of improve the county and look, kind of think outside the box, if you would, and see what we will be doing five, ten years down the road. And I thought that was a good opportunity to initiate that. But yeah, I would like to hear from the department heads as well, see what their thoughts are.
I'll say something. Anybody want to say something?
I'll say something.
So I sat on that committee and it was, it was good to sit, just even with you guys in a very informal setting. And, you know, I think probably the issue, maybe the issue is here is like the money that we're going to provide to PRPC, which y'all did a fabulous job and y'all are great facilitators of stuff. And so my question to that would be, who's going to be the ringleader if we don't have somebody like PRPC saying, you know, where are we going to go with this? But there's also, I think every one of those topics started out with money. Where are we, I mean, we had big projects and most of the time, most of the topics were, "We don't have enough money." I mean, every department that you're looking to do, whether it's clean, you know, those kind of things, those are just all, all things that, that all starts with money. It's just almost come off your. So, I mean, but it was, it was good. It was great planning. And so whatever y'all decide to do, I mean, I know that they can do the job of cracking the whip or whatever, but I mean, really, maybe the whip's going to be cracked at y'all to come up with some money. I mean, I'm not saying.
I mean, no, but I think that's absolutely fair. Yeah, that's up to you.
Yeah, I guess. It's important to note too, I mean, the strategic plan, what we did, you know, served as the facilitator of the process. We really got you guys in the room and got yous talking. And more than you guys even realized, you were the drivers of that. You were the guys that came up with those solutions. You were the guys that, that really drove that. So it's important to note, it's not PRPC's strategic plan and, and we're not going to crack the whip on anybody. You know, we are going to serve the same role as a facilitator to bring you guys together, you know, to discuss these things, to discuss, you know, paths forward and facilitate that conversation. But again, very much that's, that's part of any strategic plan, so.
I think that's, I think that's right. You hit it right on the head. It deals about money and who's the most often involved. So if we put it into this big pot and kind of stir it around, it's a, we look at prioritization as far as who's going to be flooded and to the degree. But that also goes back to the department heads advocating for, for what they feel that department would look like moving down the road. And as we sit as elected officials, you're right, it's time to kind of see is that which one of the make first, or how we would balance this out.
And Julie, when you, when you said that, made me think about the importance of the dialogue. Because today, the way our budget is, is built, obviously we rely a lot on property tax. There's not a lot of net new dollars. You guys hear me at budget all the time saying, "We got to think about it different. Our needs in our county are different and they're growing." So I, you know, I always appreciate out of the box thinking and sometimes a little radical just to think about, how do we do things differently? Because we are more urban than we think we are. We still very much are a county, depending on where you sit. So I think you're, you're exactly right. It comes down to dollars and how are we as a court, your court members wrestling with that and trying to accomplish that as best as we can.
So let's go back. Do you mean the department heads want to have any comments on if we're trying to maybe be perceived as being pushing or, or be looking to engage in the conversation more than you the sub-planting expert?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Going through this process, I've learned a lot, you know, for even ones that's been here a long time and even the new ones, we learn more about a lot of the departments. I really understood that the needs of the departments, you know, like you mentioned at budget, you know, we all go through this and everything, but there's so many needs, needs to be done in the county. What do you tackle first? And we presented that to them. One unique thing about it, we all come to an understanding, we rank these things from the most critical to the least important. And we presented that to everybody. Everybody would be back, come back and they all agree what the most important thing was. Really did hear your question was that we need to meet this four times a year too much? Was that your question? Honestly, I think it needs to be more to keep this dialogue going between all the departments and elected officials to keep it going. Carrie may have seen it, Julie may have seen it through the years. I've seen these discussions starting. They go away. I remember back in the eighties, we also had similar type of discussions started in Judge Tanner. You may remember some of these. It started and then it just died. That may have been because of some of the new court members coming on, I'm not sure why, but we seem to have them before, I think. It needs to continue.
And I mean, you've got new elected officials too coming on board and so they don't really know what we're talking about like they don't. I mean, that's just something the county can think about.
Anybody else have anything I want to say?
Yes, I do. I'm an elected official. My department head, however, was not included in this planning at all. Where do we fit it? That's what I want to know as constables. Apparently, there's not including of that. That's something that needs to be addressed and needs to be included in this planning, especially with the JAP also. I don't know if they were included, but I'm going to speak on that also. I think it's important. I think it's very important. We're an office that just has a team.
But they, I believe they were all open meetings though.
Yeah, that's.
They were posted.
So, well, we can do a better job on that because they were all open meetings, so anyone in the public could have come. What we can do after we post the next one, we can email it out, just countywide, right? That may be a, a good way to facilitate, hey, you're not on this email list. It would like to be, it's an open meeting. So yeah, that's definitely.
But I appreciate the constable. One of them, I may want to point out, he was just to invite those that were in there.
Sure.
Make me deal with the competition.
Okay, I want to know that, that would be, can we kick that out?
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody?
Well, I would make a motion that we approve the interlocal government cooperatization in this contract with professional services between Potter County and PRPC. The contract beginning ten, one of twenty eighteen through nine thirty, twenty nineteen. Funds budgeted.
Motion and second on favor of the chairman.
Thank you guys.
We should. Now, we're going to fix that people aside.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah. I'll be. Number twelve, Bushland Traffic Stoplight Consideration. Here are costs as to the installation of stoplights and to discuss options that might be considered. Sebastian, would you like to come back? You still?
Let me hear. I'll just introduce a little bit. First of all, there's nothing budgeted in our, this year's budget for this particular It's my hope that we can continue to discuss this and possibly look at some different alternatives that might help the traffic. But keep bringing it back because we seem to, we talked about in our last agenda item that we let things slip by. And I'm going to let you forget this one because it is important, not only for the safety of the parents and students up there, it's needed for our county. And so when the proposal was brought to us about a month ago, and asked Sebastian to get some estimates on costs of what this four-way stoplight cost, and so he did. He wanted to explain what you, what you.
I got with the city. Excuse me, I'm going to have to get it in my mouth. But I got with the city and I came up with a, an estimate, because they usually don't do this, but I guess he talked to the city manager and the city managers, said, "There is no problem with them designing and constructing the whole light and main tank," which we had to come up with a municipal maintenance agreement because my department doesn't know anything about street lights. So it would be all on the city. They'd take care of everything. The, the initial cost was going to be probably over three hundred thousand to get a proper contract traffic. You have to pay twenty thousand dollars upfront just to have it designed. And then, and then if it comes back and it's three hundred thousand, you don't get that twenty thousand dollars back. It's just a design cost. So that's what we're at. A hundred and fifty-one thousand they would take probably. But they would construct the whole thing, design it, construct it all in-house for the city. So if that's an option, a hundred and fifty thousand they would take.
Well, depending on the county's portion.
That's everything.
Depending on who wants to pay, who wants to pay some, I don't know how y'all would do that. And then there was some four-way lights that were for these, but that was, I think that was ridiculous. That's way too much to run. And then also, the question was raised, a four-way stop, maybe trial basis, put it out there, see what happens for a while. Maybe that'd be an option. And that's about it. Those are the options.
What's your, Sheriff, what's your experience on four-way stop signs? That's a narrative that is something that is pretty well adhered to, or do you need some monitoring additions to our account?
I think you're still going to have the same problem, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, you've got a stop sign where you go. Now, now you've got two-way stop as it is, and you're on, I think you have two more and you're going to have to. You're just trying to get the traffic to move with the stop sign. You're, you're hoping that the person remembering a little dragon still first. And then I think superstitious agreement here, it's mainly in the morning time. I think that evening, afternoon time is not, not the issue in the morning time. My guys are spending two hours up there in the morning to drive, particularly at schools, watching business instead of helping traffic. Just half as well, me and you this time.
So what I'm hearing is your thoughts, if we're leaning toward traffic light? Just a little bit with the stop sign.
Sheriff, just, I'm not in this dialogue with Bushland directly. Have you, I'm assuming this has been taken to their school board as well? And I'm assuming the school entity, the school board isn't vetting these dollars, this hundred and fifty thousand, and maybe interlocal with the city? Have, have they discussed it? Their school board in Bushland?
Have you discussed this at all?
We, we've discussed a traffic light and not put money in. We're strapped as it is, just like the county insurance.
But this is a specific need for the school, is that right?
It's a specific need for a road, for the road. And it is our road.
What is the?
It's God's way to school. It's, it's sure.
It's Bushland, which is really south. The county outfield, about the football field, the south corner of the football field.
So I guess the question, you're, you're putting out there, is there any, any supporting, partnering that we could have without just the county putting all those funds in there? Is it something that, that, what is this?
Well, I have, I mean, I Well, I have, I mean, I have two thoughts. One, Sebastian has called the city and they said, hey, we can do this in-house roughly a hundred and fifty one thousand. If you went out to a contractor, it's three hundred thousand easy, that speaks to the partnership, right? That the county and the city has and we work so hard on, I know sometimes we get some bruises on this court, but I think that speaks to that. We're, we're a partner right at the table, so that's number one, that's an important takeaway. Hundred and fifty one thousand, and then yeah, my second is that it's definitely caused by the school um traffic pattern specifically for the morning, I'm hearing. If there is, A, if the board at least knows about it, if I could pick up the phone and call one of the board members and say, what have you guys wrestled with, right? What, what budget would this normally fit under? Are you planning for something, right, that it just solely falls on the county? I, I'm just, I'm being a little cautious, right?
I think it's more than, if you're gonna do that, I think it's more than two, two is.
I would not disagree.
County now because part of that traffic is coming out randomly, you know, and so I think that's. And I, you know, we talked about while building, growth out there is astronomical. I mean, I'm not only on, on the water side, the fishing side both, and they are strapped. I mean, those guys are gonna have to be looking at a new school at some point because there is, just because of the growth that is coming.
So that, that presents another question to me, are we gonna have to have another stop?
Well, and, and I don't know, I can't speak for Bushland, but I don't know where else they will build except for on the, on the north side over there by High School anyway. Which we have a little help there because that's the state outlet, and so it takes us a hell of a somewhere along that, that road I would imagine. It depends on whether it goes on to in my, it's a west county road, so again, that's, that's future stuff I can't answer.
So maybe the concept be, be vetted as far as our, boy, did these are skin in the game that we have not brought to the table.
That's right. Mr. Church, have you talked to Randall County about?
I have not. The question was asked last time, how many cities we have around the county? We don't put in counties, but we looked at zip codes and some of them are dual. So the best we can estimate is about three hundred and thirty kids come to Randall County out of fourteen hundred and change.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd say.
And there was just a, when we had that community meeting, there was about nineteen hundred new homes planned. And so if you think each family had about two people, little school about that age.
The average, one point seven five, I don't know, at least.
I put this on not to have a decision on anything today, but it's something that I think we need to continue to discuss. I'll look it up, options, maybe we need to have a meeting with the two counties, the school district, road, bridge, chair, my chair like that either. But there's gotta be a way that we can address this. I know this year, as I started the discussion outfit, we don't have it in our budget, I'm bet.
I just, I don't see the, we didn't get anywhere to approach. And like I said, especially next year, as these houses, I mean, they're going above faster than we can turn around.
And also, I could be wrong, but if I remember correctly, once you uh get the design going, it's gonna take at least a year to design and then you gotta construct it.
What does that do to design? Great on top.
Because you, there's a business cost, you know, what, you know, what have you done? I don't know.
And I think that's something that really needs to be taken into consideration too is that where that eye is being looked at is where huge developers will be and there may be a crossing.
See, those developers will pitch in.
And that may be a position where we may have to get another part-time crossing or like we have early heels or something. I don't, I don't know that, I'm just saying, but you have more.
But I'm gonna say it's not gonna get you better, it's only gonna get worse. So can you set up a meeting with Kiva or something in there?
I'm gonna add those potential developers to that for what it's worth.
I don't think you'll up.
At least you can offer, right, you can always offer, any control shows up, but you can always offer. Thank you, thank you Sebastian for doing that.
You might say where you are, Sheriff.
Number thirteen, contract will consider for applicable of proposed contract action targeting or disposal of spin brass and lead from sheriff's firing range.
First of all, it's all the brass.
All the brass.
And basically what that is, is we just, they provide a, a container, we collect the brass and throw it in there soon enough when you're saving on it.
Have we used this, I've never seen this contract.
We, we haven't had it.
So what, what have you been doing to give it the threats?
What you been doing with the brass?
Well, it's been, it's been taken for salvage. Past many years, it's been salvaged in other companies, but nobody's ever part of a contract before.
Well, Harry, what about the lead, have you finally got the lead out?
We are, we are looking at another contract, and it's gonna be still, still in talks about it, it's actually, they'll come in and take the lead out.
It's a lot of lead in there.
Yeah, what, what was the city that figured, what they think out there?
I think the city feared about forty thousand pounds, but about a hundred and forty thousand.
Cars have been out there since, since dirt.
Yeah, since dirt.
We've probably got three times.
So Sheriff, where would this come in the budget, would one of them, does this fit in?
I don't know this cost.
It's not a charge, it's just a credit to, to help us.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no charge, it's just a credit, so we can determine how much that.
All right, make a motion.
Remember we approved the contract with actual targeting, it's built on our spin brass. Sheriff's firing range.
So.
Make a motion, second on favor of original. Four zero, thank you very much. Is this the contract you're making, do you have the original?
Is this the original?
It's, it's not a good copy.
No, it's not, no.
Okay.
It looks like someone highlighted it with like a pink or a blue highlighter is what it looks like.
Number fourteen, disposition of forfeited property to consider and approved disposition of the following forfeited property. Two thousand four Volvo XC ninety.
This is just, this is one of our procedures from off the, the road procedure. We are not going to draw this as somebody who wants to return it, so we're actually gonna combine that with two other vehicles and try to get them there. Get, get three, create a three and bring in one different.
This one can be solved, it's.
And the dollars when you sell it will go back into your forfeiture fund? I'm surprised that this court has authority to, maybe because it's properties go or not, because we don't have anything to do with forfeiture fund, I just.
Right, well.
Thing mainly is if we.
Yeah, the procedure requires uh that, that, that the budget for forfeited funds be submitted to, to and in this case, because it would involve disposition of property, it's the safer course.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve disposition of the faulty forfeiture property two thousand four Volvo XC ninety.
Second.
Make a motion, second. Four zero. Number fifteen, plant approval to consider for approval of subdivision plant prepared for Prairie West as state unit number fifteen. Bushland made a good plant of block twenty seven, block three. Prairie, Prairie West, state unit number A, to divide one lot, block twenty seven to two lots, made from seven A to seven B.
Is anybody hearing that?
I thought Mr. Miller would be, I don't think it's necessary, just divide.
Okay, that's fine. Do you don't have any problem with those two again?
No.
Does anything you do with the green shit?
No, I mean, it's just under the, under, kind of, you can divide. You want to add three foot four.
One point seven three, three point four.
It'll be a smaller city. Be smaller.
So what is the replant doing, Judge?
Just dividing.
Just dividing, one lot into two.
Twenty seven B, put it there. Twenty seven A, twenty seven B.
Okay, and uh, Mr. Church, you're foreseeing any concerns, anything?
I have not seen it before, so.
It's just what they have to do. I just.
Move to approve, I don't. Second.
Make a motion, second on favor of original. Four zero, and, and actually, sixteen, formal proposal number one one six nine dash one commissary services to consider. Above your order, formal proposal one one six nine dash one commissary services to the highest evaluated response. We keep permission to commissary network LLC after that.
Yeah, well, Chris, after talk about it, they were on the board, we're doing all the processes.
Pretty straightforward, um, the commissary that it came up to do, to renew. It seemed like a pretty straightforward, uh, it really came down to Keith just having more experience with the county. Which had pushed them over the edge, they were very, very close, as you can see by the, by the roll sheet. It's a three-year contract with two, one year renewals after that, so.
We've been pretty happy with, I think the change would have been, I think it would have been comparable no matter which one you do that.
So Keith is interstate thing, we have to change.
I would say it was a different name than that.
I think you're thinking of.
You're talking to probably.
You're thinking of five star. Yeah.
This is just commissar.
I make a motion that we approve formal bid eleven sixty nine dash eighteen commissary services awarded to Keith.
Number seventeen, road and bridge equipment purchased to consider and active only approval to purchase the following equipment. Funds are moved to A, FP five flameless pothole patcher.
Got to say it, make sure one of them has length. Okay.
The old one.
Flameless, flameless pothole patcher, one hundred seventy nine thousand nine hundred eighty one dollars, six two C five contract, which is number six dash one paper.
Price does include a trade-in number twenty ten trade line, M two dash one zero six, ten thousand dollars. And also B caterpillar one two M three motor graders, two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty six dollars, seventy seven cents. Buyable contract five one five dash one six. Price includes trade-in in nineteen ninety eight caterpillar, one two zero G, twenty five thousand dollars.
The only question I have is the ten thousand dollar trade-in for a pothole patcher. Last year it was at fifteen thousand and he dropped it five thousand dollars to last year's quote. But talking to the mechanic, uh, the truck is worth more than ten thousand dollars easily. And we still, the truck's still in shape, the pothole patcher, we've been facing it so much, it broke Thursday, matter of fact, we've been facing. I think if we took it to auction, you could probably get a lot more than ten thousand dollars, in my opinion. If it doesn't sell for that, then my opinion is no good, I guess. From what we came up with, it was maybe thirty to forty thousand dollars.
So. I, I have it both either way, with, with the trade-in or without.
Yeah, and we're still coming under, under budget if we do take the trade-in off. It's still gonna be under eighty nine thousand, which we budgeted at two hundred thousand.
Which one was two hundred thousand, the pothole patcher?
Yes.
Okay, and then how much was the second one budgeted?
Well, it's, uh, the pothole patchers at one eighty nine without the trade-in.
Okay, but the budgeted land.
It's two hundred.
And then the second one, the motor grid?
Uh, it was budgeted at two hundred.
Two twenty.
Two twenty.
Okay.
We're still up a little bit in the budget there. But I just wanted to leave, leave that up to the court to run and make it for auction. I think you'd get a lot of money.
You told me the other day that, that ten thousand ready didn't include anything for the old pothole patcher or pothole. So it's worth something, somebody out there would like it. So I think it's worth it for us to. I would move we approve the equipment purchases. For A, flameless pothole patcher for a hundred eighty nine thousand, nine nine eighty one. And not trade in a permanent, instead go to auction. Secondly, that we approve the purchase of our caterpillar motor graders, grader, two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty six, seventy seven. With the trade-in, twenty five thousand.
I have a motion, second on favor of. Number eighteen, I don't know any, any backup on this, is there any? Flameless pothole patcher.
Yeah, sorry, I have.
Okay, number eighteen, fire rescue equipment purchase to consider for applicable purchase of all equipment. Funds budgeted international harvest of forty four hundred timber wolf fire engine, four hundred forty four thousand nine hundred seventy nine dollars. SGAC bio contract, F S twelve dash one seven.
This is a new draft that we talked about in budget this year, seeing prices going up pretty tremendous later here.
Well, damn, you're learning.
And this one's not gonna be internationally, it is a freight winner. We, we put a severe service chassis on it. And that's a little bit of price increase, but most of our price increases due to.
The is this part of the general fund budget, or is this part of our?
The assistance district budget. It is, we did only have three hundred and seventy five thousand, we budgeted it in power, we, we're pushing.
Yes, very hard.
And so we will need budget to.
Within the assistance district. I move that we approve the purchase of the fire engine for forty four, four hundred forty four thousand nine hundred seventy grand dollars. And amend the, uh, assistance district budget to that.
Make a motion, second on favor of.
Bring pictures back and Sebastian, of all this new equipment, bring some pictures.
Number nineteen, employment item to consider and act upon the following, all items elections. New employment of Linda Humphries, temporary deputy clerk after election loss.
Second.
Make a motion, second on favor of. Twenty, any county projects?
Move we approve the new employment of Linda Humphries, temporary deputy clerk after election loss.
Second.
Make a motion, second on favor of. Twenty, any county projects?
Morning, Ms. Uh, just briefly on the law enforcement center project, uh, some of the, uh, today we had twenty nine more things filed out there. And it was, it's filed two more this morning, notified with contractors that rest from water leak, so we'll be. And it was, it's filed two more this morning, and I'll notify the contractors that dress from water leak, so we'll be getting that moved out. Out of the warranty claims, number one is our most critical, it's still not been completed to date. This has to do with the proper law operation out there. I'll be calling a meeting this week with western builders in order to get this thing on track. See if we can get that portion correct. The, regarding the law enforcement center, the work is still dated, the project is not complete. Uh, the composite metal panels in front of the building, the dark panels that you see out there. Uh, we rejected all of that, there are complaints listed. At this time, Western Builders brought in a new contractor, one that they use in some of their current projects. The, it is slated right now for the removal of these panels to start on the fifteenth of October. The new install will be the twenty-second, they anticipate two to three weeks. So after that, hopefully we can say the project is actually completed once this is all done. Uh, and related to that, I need to make aware the current contract you have with Architects. The PO has not been closed out. Uh, we still have two line items on there that Architects is still, needs to be compensated for. One of them is the law enforcement center vehicle rights, the big project out there. We're still holding a balance in right now. Once the composite metal panels are finished, they can get paid their last of their money there. The second one is on the law enforcement, I mean, the downtown, you know, Co-15, down here on the demolition. These cases, project management design, they have not invoiced us on that, so we anticipate that coming in in the near future. So those are the only two that's being right now regarding contract with Architects. Uh, Western Builders, I currently right now still refer to sixty thousand, slightly over sixty thousand dollars for the management. Once you get the composite metal panels finished, then we will release some of that money. One of the concerns that I have here, and I've talked to Larry Ursick with Architects about this, and Western Builders as well. Uh, Architects has presented me with a contract amendment, I believe it would actually be identified at number seven, if I'm not mistaken. I've not presented that to the court. Larry Ursick feels that he needs to be compensated to come back out and look at these panels during the project. To re-inspect, to ensure everything's done good. Uh, I told him that, initially told him that I did not think Potter County needs to pay that. That needs to be something that Western Builders pays. So that, how long has happened between those two right there? I have spoken to Western Builders about it. I'll make all to embark this out, because I do not want to bring another contract amendment back to the commission's court. Honestly.
I have a good question there. Maybe a naive question. Is this, I'm thinking about the amount of money in my mind that we have paid Architects. That's the undertone of my comment is, why is he just not, as a good partner, getting on a plane and finishing?
I think you ought to come back up there and do it, because y'all, hey, you want.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking in the millions, I, I.
I mean, the, the bonus that you got at the end.
Yeah, but I'm even thinking the long-term partnership we have with Architects. And to get this close to the end, that, that's a plane ride from Austin, right? But that's, I'll reserve.
Makes a lot of sense.
But I have not pushed that, I would not be willing to push that to the commission's court. Uh, the downtown, the, the project that we have over here, where the OCo-15 is created, the installation and the landscape, it is completed. We're waiting, I believe Nicholas has closed out all the purchase orders on that particular project over there. Just to make it aware, why it took so long, the way it's done, the way it is. Looked at it, you seen a lot of excavation going over there. We actually required it from a simple engineering standpoint to remove a lot of the sub-race oil to prepare for your future. Why it's happened over there is nothing more than a temporary situation. We did put irrigation in, we put the grass in there, it's nice looking.
Looks really good.
Until y'all decide what, what to do with the pizza product. Uh, do you understand that there are four signposts on each side of the property? So how do y'all choose to post a property, use it for whatever, we have that included.
I have been approached by several people thinking, thank you, thank you for the dog park. We need to specifically discuss that this is not a dog park.
I mean, y'all have the capability. I've heard that they might be a force, force coming over there, or wanting to force.
Yes, I have not talked about that.
We would have known that, we just.
I would worry, I would worry about that.
And it's all I have.
Thank you. I've got a twenty-one jail report, we have five hundred and seventy-six individuals in our jail, ninety-two of those are females, none are shipped out. Eighty-eight percent are felons, eighty percent are male. Kind of change, obviously, everything, but it was, oh, executive session, change the hours for next time.
We'll just add the extension office, I don't really resent, it's not involved this time. Anything else?
Nothing else, we have to, thank you everybody.